I was wondering if we could have an ordinance here in town about the fireworks. It's getting out of control. And nobody has room in their yard to have fireworks in town. And I found all this on my yard, fire vehicle, on the roof. And I just don't think it's right to have them in town. There's not enough room. Everybody knows the size of the lots in town and nobody's got a big enough yard to do it. And they're not just putting on sparklers. They're gigantic things just like you have downtown. And I wondered if we could have an ordinance against it in town. So if I called you if they did it right beside of my house and you you would come and make them quit. Well, I didn't know you had an ordinance against it. You're not allowed to do it in town? Oh, these are big. These was big and they was allowed and it was a long time. So all we got to do is call you. Thank you. Oh, you can catch them. They're young and not very schmunky. Okay, call the 911? Okay, what if it's over at the 911's house? Called you early?
Jake, you're here for the water company presentation. Stephanie. Stephanie Westfall. Stephanie is a member of the sanitary board.
And can I get these copies back?
Sure.
To members of Weston City Council and to Mayor Kim Harrison Edwards, we, the undersigned members of the Weston Sanitary Board, write to express our collective and unequivocal opposition to any proposal that would allow West Virginia American Water to review the assets of the Weston Sanitary Board in the city of Weston for the purpose of preparing an offer to purchase our wastewater utility system. While we recognize that infrastructure investment and utility management are serious responsibilities, we must equally, we must be equally serious about protecting the interests of the residents of Weston. After careful consideration, we have concluded that allowing West Virginia American Water to move forward in this process would not serve the best interests of our community. Our concerns are rooted in the following realities. Substantially higher rates. West Virginia American Water is on record acknowledging that any acquisition would result in rate increases for Weston customers. In fact, West Virginia American Water operates the most expensive water and wastewater systems in the state of West Virginia. Allowing their acquisition of our system will almost certainly burden ratepayers with significantly higher bills, costs that many in our community simply cannot afford. Diminished customer service. If West Virginia American Water's wastewater customer service reflects its existing water service, we should expect a decline in the quality and responsiveness of customer care. Our staff, the shared team of both the city and Weston Sanitary Board made up of local residents, currently responds to community complaints with urgency and accountability. Under West Virginia American Water, residents will likely be routed to a call center, stripped of local responsiveness that they've come to expect and deserve. The act of permitting West Virginia American Water to review city and sanitary assets would likely entail the sharing of confidential regulatory and legal compliance materials. This raises significant concerns about proprietary and sensitive information being accessed by a private for-profit entity whose interests may not align with those of the city or its residents. Currently, residents with concerns about sewer service can bring those matters directly to a board of their neighbors, people who live here and share their concerns. If they don't find resolve there, they can come to you, our council of their neighbors. Once control is handed over to West Virginia American Water, there will no longer be a local body to petition or hold accountable. The community's voice in utility matters would be diminished, if not eliminated entirely. The wastewater system is the last remaining public utility asset under the city of Weston's control. Its sale would leave the city without any direct utility infrastructure, a significant loss not only in operational capacity, but in long-term strategic autonomy. Our wastewater system remains one of Weston's greatest political assets. It's a tool that allows the city to promote responsible development, enforce fair policy, and respond quickly to public needs. Relinquishing this asset to a private company would permanently limit the city's ability to shape its own future. For these reasons, we strongly urge Weston City Council not to entertain West Virginia American Water's request to conduct an asset review and to instead reaffirm the city's commitment to public ownership, community accountability, and long-term stewardship of this essential service. Respectfully submitted, Allen Butcher and Stephanie Westfall. Thank you.
Hello, um, we put a request in for a parade permit for August 2nd. Um, I know with the thing it asked for a map of the two routes. I did two routes because I know it's the yard sale weekend, which is a lot of commotion, a lot of people coming into the area. We want to be the least restrictive as possible. So one is starting at the middle school and going in front of the middle school, not crossing any roads, looping around right there in front of CVS, walking out past H and M Motor and coming into our recovery center at the Garten Plaza. So we would cause no road crossings at 1:00 on August 2nd. The other one was to go up One Street over to School Drive in front of the Fire Department, walk up that way, then take the left at the go mark and the same path. We would be crossing two roads. If that would cause too much disruption on that day or needing from the chief police escort, we're willing to take the least amount possible to like cause disruption because I know there'll be a lot of traffic that day. And it's in the middle of the day, followed by a recovery wellness fair for the community. We're having that day as well out at Garten Plaza. So I'm asking if we could have a permit to walk the sidewalk, not even the road, because again, I don't want to cause that commotion for our first event. Next year, maybe ask for the road, but this year, just asking if we could use the sidewalk have a permit to have a gathering of people, under 100 people, walk the space with signs and banners saying support recovery. Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and board members and all my good rivals over on my left. Hey, John, I forgot to say, here's the man right there. That's the good man in town. But anyway, I came up here tonight to talk about sanitation department. Because I do like living on Heath Court. I like having a bathroom and everything. And I understand there's very few people down there working. And I'm just wondering if we got the right people down there that really, that the state requires for us to have our sanitation department open, to be honest with you. And I don't know where you all the reporter everything into the state that's going on here or not, but if you haven't, it should be done. And I've talked to three of you two, of you, but these two, I don't know them. So I've never had a chance to talk face to face with them. But I think we got something that's, everyone's pushing to the side, one way or the other. And I'm not blaming, I mean, I'm not blaming no one because we're all in this together. And I've been fighting this for years and two or three of you know, I've been complaining about the same problem for at least two or three or four years. And it needs to be something done. If it's not done pretty soon, I think we're all going to be closing our bathroom doors because the sanitation department's not going to be there. There's too many holes in the lines. There's just too many things that need to be fixed. And no one knows where they're at now because we then chased them all off and stuff. And of course, I don't know, I could sit here and talk for hours, but I know no one, no one listened to me all night. But it's just, it's got to be corrected. And sooner and sooner and quicker, the better it's going to work for all of us, not just you guys sitting here. But there got to be something done tomorrow, not next week. Because I know over the past, I've had complaints from the guys that used to work down there. They needed a wrench or they needed a screwdriver or they need to go buy some gas to crank a chainsaw up or a weed eater. But wait till Monday, we'll give you some money Monday. We're broke today and stuff like that. And then I'm not going to go watch Nate say that. I'm just going to skip that part. But everyone knows it anyway. So you can't hire a sanitation employee for two or three or four, five or $10 an hour nowhere. And then I'm just going to say one thing about this. You cannot divert the city, the street department and the sanitation department into one group because it will never work because everybody at the sanitation department, it's got to be certified to do their job. If they're not, you're supposed to get rid of them. But you know, such a question that we got down there. And I don't know where we got the people down there now, where I guess they're supposed to be. Because I think, if I understand it right, there's got to be a person of class three or four on site all the time. The plant's open for it to be open. So I don't know if you all realize that or not, but there's a lot of things that's going on that don't meet the public's eye. And other than that, I'm going to credit that because I know it's sickening. And I hate to talk about because everybody else is afraid to say something, but Bob Nicholson's not afraid to say something. I'm going to tell you straight to your eyeballs what I think about it. If you don't like it, just tell me go to where and I'll go and I'll leave you be. But next week, when the door shut on your front door and you can't use your bathroom, then you're going to all think about it, how quick it's going to happen. And there's, there's two of them. I'm going to say, this is a modest part of it. My buddy lives at 103 Court Street, Good Samaritan. He's got a yard that looks like a, I don't know what it looks like. I guess drafts and animals and all them people should be living there. It's a big brick house right on the corner beside the courthouse, the house I'm talking about. And well, that his is included too. Because he keeps carrying all the good grass out of his yard and all he wants to see beautiful dirt. Except he's going to get grass one of those days. And Mr. Posey over there, he went from finally gave someone a ticket that works in a house next door to me. And they haven't, by the way, none of them people has parked in my handicap sign since you did that. I forgot to tell you that. But I was told indirectly that I had, I asked if I could speak to the girl that was parking in front of my house every day, this other employee, I don't know who she was. But she talked to me like I was one of them drug addicts. I reckon, I don't know. Maybe I am a drug addict, but on a different kind of drugs. And then she said, you don't have no business talking to her. She's parking in a legal place. And I said, I know it's legal. I can't control it. But I'd just like to see the person would take a parking spot from an old man that sometimes, don't need it all the time, but sometimes I do need it. I just like to have it when I need it. But that's besides one or two, but we'll skip that too. And the, and Fire Department Chief, I had company in from New Jersey and Virginia all the weekend. They watched your fireworks and let you all know that you've done the best job that they've ever seen for a small community to have for fireworks. So I'm, so I'm going to leave on the good point of that. Thank you all.
I'd like for Joe to go ahead and address, we, we did have this conversation with Mr. Nicholson in the past at a community meeting. And just so the public knows and to set the record straight, the steps that have been done and the things that have been corrected, please.
Yep. We are required to have a class three operator on site. It is not required that they be on site 24/7. I mean, the plant operates all day, every day. They don't have to be on site 24/7. We would need four or five operators to make that happen. Uh, but we do have a class three operator there. Richard Barnett is contracted to help us with those services. He also has several other junior operators with him that come and assist at the plant. We used to have one, what I'll call junior operator on staff. We now have two junior operators on staff. That was done to increase safety. I think it's, it's, it's a right criticism to be concerned when one person is working in a very dangerous environment by themselves. So we've increased staffing down at the plant for that reason. Uh, we, we have combined our labor forces with, between the street department and the line crew. The biggest challenge that we have there is staffing right now. We, we are short two men in that department or women. We, we do need to hire some people there. But in, in terms of being able to get things done, working together, the plant has been able to address issues in the past six months that have gone unaddressed for between five and 10 years. The plant is operating the way it's supposed to right now. Our UV system has not operated correctly in, I think, at least five years. And I think for maybe about three weeks, it's been operating the way it's supposed to. So we're really proud of that achievement. I think we have less spills actively going on right now than we have in the last several years at any given time. So we've been able to address things more efficiently and address things more quickly. So with that all said, I, I'm really pleased with the direction everything is going in the sanitary department. The, the weakness that we have right now is we do need to hire two more laborers, especially folks with CDLs. If there are folks with CDLs out there looking for a job, please come see us at the city of Weston. The other thing that we have is I mentioned that we have our class three operator on contract, Mr. Richard Barnett. We would like, it would be preferable to have, instead of a contracted assistant like that, to have a W2 employee who is a contractor, who is an operator, I should say. We made an offer to an operator and as of June 30th, he's officially chosen to decline. So we still don't have a prospect for an in-house W2 operator. But we're still very well-served by our contract with Mr. Barnett, with his class three operator's license and the several other operators he brings with him. I think his team collectively brings something like 40 years' operator's experience to the plant. And they've been really essential in uncovering some of the problems that we didn't even know we had and helping us get those turned around and fixed. So thank you for letting me speak to that.
Thank you.
Getting those spills recorded to be reviewed. And I understand staff has been working, has been very well.
Yes, and all of the required monthly reporting, recording, recording has been done always. Working down there, all of the, all of the, all the reporting that we're required to do is being done and all the testing and sampling that we're required to do. While our, indeed, yes, I'm, that's, all that.
Thank you, Dave.
Next, we have a presentation from Jake and Caitlin with West Virginia American Water Company. They have appeared before to the sanitary boards and a couple of members of council.
Okay, I'm sorry. I feel like I'm very tall right now. Yeah. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to come back again to speak with everyone tonight. As the mayor said, my name is Jake Glance. I'm with the West Virginia American Water. Have been with the company for a little over six years. I'm not exactly local. I grew up outside of Fairmont. My dad worked over at the state hospital there for a long time. Worked at the original one when there were still patients there. So I've been around this area for a long time. I was telling Mike and Caitlin on the way in about playing Lewis County in pretty much everything growing up. So bought my first car in Weston, actually. But what we bought, I want to talk about tonight, following up on what the sanitary board mentioned earlier, is something that is very far off into the future. There are no deals going to be made tonight. There's nothing going to be signed tonight. All we're doing is talking about possibilities of opportunities of things we can do to see what our options are here in Weston. We're not making any decisions about what we're going to do, about selling it, not selling it, keeping it, not keeping it. None of that's going to happen tonight. What I want to give the city council the opportunity to think about is what we can do that probably needed to be done in Weston for a long time. But for whatever reason, there's a lot of reasons why, just maybe wasn't done, whether it's staffing, what was funding, or whatever it was. But what we're going to go through right now, I think, does everybody have the letter that I gave to the mayor? If it's in your packet, I have other copies of it. Very short letter, but it's, it's pretty dense about what this process entails. And I can, I can speak specifically to what the lady from the sanitary board mentioned earlier about the concerns on the side of the sanitary board. Happy to go through those one by one if, if the city council wants to do that. What we are proposing to the city council, I have copies if, if you guys need extra copies. Are we good? Okay. May I approach and hand you, and hand you a letter? I feel like I'm in a court of law here.
We can share.
So long as nobody yells objection from the back row, we should be, we should be all right. But what this letter details is what the due diligence process is. And we can also talk about what it is not. This is a no obligation. Look at your wastewater system. We are not going to bill you for any work that we do. Ultimately, our goal is to get the city an offer to purchase the wastewater system. That offer will include the, the value of the assets, what these things are worth. There's a lot of different ways we can put the value on the assets. That's one thing. The debt repayment, that all the debt that's on the system now, I think the debt right now is, is about almost $19 million. That is debt that the system took out to build things, whatever they are. The company would pay that off. So when we buy things, they have to be free and clear of all loans and bonds. The company pays that off. And then whatever is left from the purchase price goes to the city of Weston and you can do whatever you want to do with it. But then again, that's far down the road. That offer will also include what our plan is for employees. I can tell you now that the plan is and will be to offer all the people who work at the sanitary board now a job, to offer employment to all of those people. I think even though they may not say it publicly, our benefits are very, very good, much better than most places. So that's a benefit. Not just the pay raise, but also the, the new equipment and a lot of times. PPE, we take very seriously worker safety, making sure they have what they need to work safely. That will also include what our five-year improvement plan is to get the system kind of up to speed, up to our standard. Sometimes those five-year improvement plans can stretch into the tens of millions of dollars. The highest one I've seen was for a much larger system. And I believe it was, it was in the neighborhood of $60 million. I'm not saying that this, this system needs that much work, but part of what our due diligence process will be is to identify those improvements and build that into our plan that we will then present to you. Also, part of the offer will be what is going to happen with rates. As, as, as the lady said, our, our rates are higher. But that's because comparing a publicly run system to a privately run system is really like comparing apples and oranges. As a private company, we're not able to get the grants and loans that public systems are. So we have to front all the money that we invest in our system upfront. That money comes from a lot of places. It could come from the sale of stock. We're a publicly traded company. You can get on your phone right now and buy it. Anybody can. So that's where our money comes from to make improvements to our system. So that's why when we invest in our system, we have to pay for it, has to come from somewhere. So we can't get grants, not free taxpayer money like some publicly run systems can. That in a nutshell is, is what it is. That's the end result. Now, to get there, what we have to do is kind of coordinate with the sanitary board on sharing some documents, doing a site visit, going through a little high-level financial information, getting some high-level employee data, which is basically this person does this job. They're classified as this job title. Then we kind of match that up with how we, whatever that job is with the water company and come up with a plan to say, okay, employee number one makes this now. They'll make this if they come over to the water company. There's no names in that information. Usually we just ask people to identify employee one, employee two. So we don't need to know employee information. Furthermore, we sign NDAs all the time. So if the city wants to sign an NDA, we're happy to do that. We do it all the time. And basically what it is, is it's, it's sharing information securely, whether it's financial information, a lot of it's publicly available through the PSC. But some of it's not. So that's, that's the, the crux of the, of the document sharing. The site visit is something that we need to work with the sanitary board on. It's basically a guided tour, a one-day guided tour. We would come and look at the plant. We go look at the CSOs. There are five of them. Look at the lift stations to identify which ones can be fixed, which ones need replaced. And then come up with that five-year plan to say, this is what the improvements are going to be. Come up with a plan to say, this is what it's going to cost us to run the system. But that's, that's, that's where we are. It's not complicated. There's no strings attached. There's no obligation. We give you that offer. City council can vote yes, they can vote no. The sale of a municipal wastewater system requires a 60% vote of council. So it's three out of, three to five is all it takes. So if the three city council members think this is a good idea, after examining all that information, that this, they think this is the best thing for Weston, then that's what we're going to do. We've been in this city for a long time. We've invested significantly in the Weston water plant. We've been in this city for a long time. We've invested significantly in the Weston Water Plant. A lot of people don't know that that plant, we doubled the capacity the last couple of years, and we push water from Weston to Webster Springs. So Webster Springs gets their water from Weston. When we say we're going to invest in things to make them work better, we follow through. And I think our commitment to Weston has been shown by investing in the Weston plant when we could have invested somewhere else, but we invested here. That plant is, it's a little beast. It's, it's a, it's a good, it's a good little plant. So that's a lot of words. I can stop for questions right now. We have a few more things to go through, but we can go through that in a minute. I want to make sure that council has all their questions answered. Or anybody from the, I can answer any questions from anybody, not just council. Sure. Well, the way it works, if you, if we need to get into rates, whenever we do a project, we have to front that money, where that money comes from. It's usually, some of it's from the sale of stock. And we invest, we say we do a ten million dollar project. We put it in the ground, it's used, used and useful. Then we have to go back to the Public Service Commission and show them what we did. Sometimes they give us all the recovery that we want, sometimes they don't. Usually, it's between six and eight percent recovery, and then that increases what's reflected in your bill, that then, that's how we, that's how we pay for those improvements. But that's just, yeah, selling stock is, is one way as a private company that we get ways to fund these improvements. And something else is that whenever we look at how we fund these projects, because we have one hundred and seventy-five thousand customers around the state, say we have to do that ten million dollar project in Weston, that cost isn't being borne just by the people here. People in Charleston, people in Huntington, people in Bluefield, Oak Hill, Fayetteville, Princeton, Eastern Panhandle are helping to pay for that here. That lessens the impact. Now, it goes the other way. Weston Water Customers, American Water Customers here in Weston are paying into a big pot, and that money is going all over the state. That means we have more money available to invest in improvements that other smaller publicly owned systems just, just don't have. It's, that's why I said it's apples to oranges when you compare rates. It's, well, that's, that's when we go to the PSC to say everything that we did. That's every, every penny that we spent. We're not going to get that in recovery. Typically, the PSC gives us, like I said, six to eight percent. That's what we got last time. So even though we invested all that money, we don't recover on that in rates. So anything we do here, by the way, if Weston agrees to, to go through with this, the PSC still has to review everything that we do. And say we arrive to a purchase price and a timeline and all that stuff, the PSC can alter any, any portion of that, of that agreement. They take public comment, they have an evidentiary hearing where we have to, it's a court proceeding, you have to put your hand up and swear to tell the truth. So no matter what we agree to here, if we do, it still has to be approved by the Public Service Commission. You're welcome. Yep. Most of it is on, like I said, the front end, getting us the information that we, that we, we request. Sometimes that information just doesn't exist, so it's important to identify those things quickly. Most of it is things like mapping, any kind of projects that the system wants to do that we may be able to kind of pick up the torch and run with. It's a little bit of financial information, like on the loans and bonds and things, to know how much our repayment obligation is going to be. The biggest thing is, I think, the, the day of the site visit, going through that, because that can be a kind of a, that's, that's a whole day of only doing that. The employee information sometimes can be a little bit intricate, just because we're asking for, we're not asking for names, but we need to know, like, years of service, just so we can say, like, if this person comes on, say you've been with the Weston Sanitary Board for forty years, and you come over to American Water. You wouldn't start as a day-one, year-one employee. You would have the same vacation time as a forty-year employee. So you get more vacation time than me. Even though I've been with the company longer, you have more years of service. So a lot of it is, uh, just the, the stuff that the sanitary board has is just tracking it down for us. And we're, and we'll have, we'll set up calls to help people walk through it. They're not on their own, so we'll do everything we can to help them. The way, we don't do stormwater as, as a company, just because stormwater doesn't need treated. So what we have done in the past is, if you have a pipe that have stormwater and wastewater in it, it's combined system, we will separate that, because we want our plant to be as efficient as possible. Every, every drop of water we have come in, we want, want to be wastewater, not rainwater, because you have to treat it. So if we would separate that out, that's why I think the sanitary board, if we were to go down this road, would have to stay in existence to manage those stormwater assets, because we don't, we don't do that. But if we say we, we pay to separate those lines, we would keep the wastewater and just give the sanitary board their stormwater lines to then operate and maintain. So you're kind of getting a free, a free stormwater drain, because we don't, we don't do that. We don't operate stormwater systems. Sorry, sorry. I, I don't know that we have, simply because, just like everywhere else in the state, we're losing population. We have the same problems that everybody else does with fewer customers, people using less water, because they use more efficiently. Yeah, I mean, but, but. Well, we have, we operate in fourteen states, so it's not just, it's not just West Virginia. So we're, we're a portion of it. But to answer your question about, about a rate decrease, the best way to do that, to get the rates to go down, is simply to have more people paying the rate. So if we would acquire a system that says, has, say, twenty thousand customers, and we suddenly have that many more ratepayers, that means there's more people that, that covers that same amount of money, the rate could come down. And it, it would theoretically, if you have more people paying the rate. But I don't know, to give you an exact date and year of the last time we did a rate decrease, I don't know. I don't, I don't think we have. Weston, Weston has about twenty-seven hundred customers, wastewater customers. As far as wastewater systems go, it's not small, it's not big. The average is about eighteen hundred, so you're bigger than average. Not the largest by any, by any means, but you also have the Jane Lu wastewater coming into the plant, which adds the flow of about nine hundred or so people. So that means that Weston has a plant that's big enough to serve almost four thousand people, but you only have twenty-seven hundred direct connections. So that's, even though there may be that many people in the county, they're not all on public, you know, city wastewater. Like, we don't, we don't have that many water customers here. There might be people out on a, on a well-inseptic, and that's, that still happens, so that's fine. Yeah, I think, and, and to your point, I think if the population in Weston continues to, to decline, just like it is everywhere, it seems everywhere, except for a few pockets in West Virginia, there will be fewer direct ratepayers in Weston, less money coming in, but you still have a big plant to maintain. Even though you may have fewer customers paying into it, it's going to cost more to fix that plant. You know, things don't, you know, you, you may have fewer people paying in, but the cost of the stuff to fix the plant continue to go up. So that's, it's kind of like a, how, how far do you let it go before it might be a little out of, out of reach? I'm not, not saying it's like that in West, I'm not saying that, but it does happen in other parts of the state. And then before you know it, there's you know, deferred maintenance, and it's not just deferred for five years, it's deferred indefinitely. And that's just not how we, that's just not how we run our systems. We invest proactively, we, we replace a lot of line. Typically, whenever we do our, like I said, the five-year capital plan that we come up with, a huge portion of that is, is main replacement. If we know a, a line needs fixed and it's leaking, we fix it. Because we, you know, leaking water or leaking wastewater, it's money on the ground, and it's an environmental hazard, so we have to fix it. And our goal as a company is to have zero environmental notices of violation. That's a, that is a company-wide goal. We don't, zero is our number. Just like we have a goal of zero lost days from work, from being hurt on the job. We don't, we don't do that. We do our best to not do that. We take care of our people. So it's, I, I, we can get into this, I don't want to hijack the meeting, but that's, that's kind of like a little bit of the, the inside baseball there. You don't, you don't have a sewer bill? Doesn't affect you. I like saying that to a, to a cop. That's, that's the easiest interaction I've ever had with a cop before. Jeez. I say you need to read me my rights first. No, no, that's okay, please. Uh, I mean, what, what, what the lady said from the sanitary board is, I'm not going to tell you that there's not going to be a rate, it's not going to affect your rate, because it will. I'm not going to lie to you and say that it's not. I can't tell you exactly what it's going to be. I can tell you that the level of investment that we can bring to the table is exponentially higher than what you see with publicly owned systems. That's just, it's not picking on Weston, that's just the way it is. Because a lot of times, a public system, you apply for grants, you wait in line, sometimes you get half your grant, sometimes you get none of the grant. Sometimes, you know, a politician will tell you they're going to get you something, and you wait, and you wait, and then they lose. So I think, again, this is, uh, this can be a very high-level thing. There's no strings attached. We're not going to send you a bill. We're happy to sign an NDA. But what I would ask the city council to think about is the future of the city. The level of investment that we're willing to make here, not just giving the, the people who work at the plant a job, because we need them to keep running it, because they know it. If it's a problem for them, it's going to be a problem for us. It's addressing those CSOs, and something we haven't talked about yet is the taxes that we pay as a private company. All those assets that are publicly owned, like the plant, all those lines, the lift stations, all of that is not taxed. If we buy it, the first day, it becomes taxable. And just looking at the amount of taxes we pay the city and the county on the water plant, on all the lines, it's in the neighborhood of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year in taxes that we pay. So if that plant is inside the city limits of Weston, if it's not, you might want to annex it, just to make sure you get that. But we pay taxes. That's what we do. Private companies pay taxes.
Sure.
The city, the, the city of Weston, yeah, city of Weston, uh, things that cities do all over the state, Weston is one of them. They put a municipal tax on water service. A lot of places do that. Small towns, big towns, Charleston has one, the town of East Bank. I don't know if you guys have ever been to East Bank. East Bank has one. But it's a tax that is on the people in, in town that is not our tax. We don't keep that money. It's just on the bill. So every, I think it's every quarter, we remit that back to the city. So if you wanted to do that on the wastewater side, city council can, can do that. That's just something that we put on the bill and then remit that to the city. Yes, ma'am. I thought you, I thought you had a question. Where's, where's your, uh, where's your best friend today? Oh, bummer. I was, I kept expecting to see his head pop up there, like, like last time. Yeah, my, my, yes, sir. We look for ways to maximize efficiency in operations. We have a lot of people here on the water side anyway. There could be a lot of overlap just with the equipment that we use. A backhoe can dig up a water line or sewer line. So there's efficiencies here. And if we're doing a, fixing a water line, and we have a sewer project that we need to do at the same time, tear the street up once, then pay it back. So we look for ways to maximize the work that we do. We don't want to have people driving all over the state, so chances are we're going to be able to increase efficiency just because of the number of people we're going to have here. And it's a decent-sized system. It's not, it's not small, by any, by any stretch of the imagination. I think it's the twenty, what number is it? Thirty-seventh largest wastewater system in the state. So, and you have a big, it's, it's not, it's not invaluable. It's, it's valuable. It's twenty-five million dollars net book value. It's worth some money. You do some quick back-of-the-napkin math, you take the debt off, it could be in the neighborhood of a couple million dollars that the, the city of Weston keeps to do whatever it is that you want to do with it, so. Very far down the road. Yeah. I think the main thing you get is you know what your options are. If, if the council ultimately does end up saying no, at least you know what you're saying no to. What that purchase offer will say is, I mean, I'm, I'm sure we're not going to find anything that's, that the sanitary board doesn't already know about projects that need done, the timeline that they need done in. It's going to be just done a lot faster. So a lot of our improvements are done in the first five years. The CSOs, I can tell you, would be priority probably one or one A, along with the line replacements, because those CSOs need addressed. They're, they're an environmental hazard, they're a human health hazard, and we don't like having them, because CSOs, the O in CSO stands for overflow. It's, it's raw sewage. It's called what it is. It's raw sewage on the ground, and we don't like that. Because the DEP, just like they knock on your door, they pound on ours too. So that's one of the first things. And that's just, that's just the money that we would set aside to fix that. I don't know when they were put in, but they've probably been there for decades. Just like every other system that was built that way, when it was first built, that's the first thing, is addressing those CSOs, making sure the plant can handle that additional flow. For example, in Nitro, we're buying the city of Nitro's wastewater system. At the plant, we're going to build a one-million-gallon storm surge tank to close all those CSOs. Instead of letting that flow into the river, the Canal River, we're going to capture it in that big tank, and then feed it back to the plant and treat all of it. So that's the level of commitment that we're looking at, looking at doing. So I think with the city, the most valuable thing you gain here is just insight and awareness of what your options are. Like I said, there's no, you're not going to hurt my feelings if you vote no. Our goal is to get you an offer that you can then debate amongst yourselves. And if you want to do it, that's great. We want to do it. And if not, I still like you, ma'am. I'll still like you. It's okay. No, no problem. No problem. So I guess what my, my question to council is, I know we didn't vote on anything tonight as far as allowing the, the due diligence or anything like that. I guess, I guess, what are the next, what do you think is the next step here? Oh, it is. I will then sit down and be quiet. Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to allow the West Virginia Mayor of the Water Company to, to that, to the Sanitary Board. Is there anyone who would like to make that motion? Yeah, we have a motion to table until a future meeting date, and a second. Any discussion?
My discussion would be a little more transparency and research to see where we stand as far as giving out information, the benefits, the work itself, and just a little more research. And just a little more research, but I'm asking for a little clearer picture.
And having been out of town the last time, this is my first introduction to this, so I would appreciate a little bit more time, ma'am. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. So, um, and moving with the water company, something that you would want, uh, Joe to set up, to discuss your concerns further, if you're open to that.
Can I give you a call, see if I'm direct phone number?
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next, we have minutes from the regular session and two special sessions. If you had a chance to work early days and attain a motion to accept these distributing, no addition to the correction.
Yeah. I'll move to approve.
Awesome.
To move in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I oppose. Next, reports of boards and commissions. This is our meeting Wednesday, the fifteenth, four P M. Landlord's commission, July tenth at one thirty. Planning commissions, July eighth at four thirty. The minutes come on BBA, July twenty-third at five P M. Free commission, Thursday, July twenty-fifth, and reading at the Arts Council, July eighth at five thirty. Land reviews, July twenty-eighth at five. Neighborhood watch, next meeting, August sixth at six P M.
Thank you.
I, I would like to thank Chief Fundamentals. Still have one physician and one alternate to be filled on board's own report.
Good evening. Y'all have my report, so I'll keep it short and only highlight just a couple of things for you. Just to, um, let you know, I talked with the engineer right before we got to the meeting this evening and he let me know that we had heard back from DEP with the, uh, design plans that were sent to them. And they had eight very minor comments back, uh, things that they'll be replying back to them with. I did ask him if there was anything for us to worry about or anything of majority there. And he said, no, that it was a young engineer that reviewed those and he just, uh, had a few things, uh, minor things for them to reply back to. So they'll be doing that and have those back to DEP by Wednesday. And they'll review those and we should hear back from them within the month. Um, hopefully we can put that to bed and get moving forward with this project and get the drying beds in and, and be done with that. The other thing, um, of news is the UV bulbs, one side of those have all been replaced and lab results were in and for the most part, all of those results are good and we're back in compliance with all the sampling. Um, fee calls included, which is something that we haven't had for a good while. All the sampling is being done by the guys down there. And, uh, everything in our NPDES permit that we have to sample is being sampled and taken in in a timely manner. So we're all in compliance with that as well. The other thing, um, is the headworks that we've been working on the grit chamber there and we're getting ready to replace um, a valve down there, pretty major valve. And once that's been replaced, uh, and when I say a major valve, I mean, we'll have a hole dug about the size of this in here, right here, uh, to have that replaced and then the grit chamber will be up and running. And that's something that hasn't been for several years too. So it will be up and we'll have that running. That'll be one more piece to the puzzle of getting us right back where we should be. So I appreciate those guys and I appreciate the operators. And yes, there is a, a class three operator down there running the plant. So, um, rest assured that we do have the proper people in and the licensed people in and all the reporting is being done. So. Your, um, financial report as far as, uh, what's coming in, we're right on track with that at, uh, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-six this, uh, past month. And seems to be that people are paying like they should be and behaving themselves for the most part, even without my extra calls this month. So when I do the extra calls next month, we'll be even better. So. I appreciate y'all's help and patience with us and y'all's support.
Thank you.
Our meeting is next Monday at four thirty. You guys are always invited at any time.
Thank you.
All right, I'll try to keep this really short. Um, it takes a little longer to wrap up the end of the year than it does to wrap up the end of a normal month. So I don't have the year fully wrapped up yet, but I wanted to give you a few updates. One, I think carryover is going to come in on target. Uh, you'll see later in the budget, there's, there's one more large expense. I'm going to ask you to approve out of uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. But I think after that, carryover will land on target. Um, so it's neither going to be below target or, uh, particularly above. I think we're going to be, we're just going to hit our target that we're looking to hit. Um, after that, we're going to need to approve revision one of the budget. Um, uh, in that first month of the fiscal year, after we've determined our carryover, uh, which I think will be around five hundred thousand dollars. Um, then we need to modify our budget and turn that into the state auditor's office, uh, before July thirtieth. So, um, I would anticipate a special session later in the month, um, to go over those year end numbers and to approve, um, uh, revision one of the budget, um, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. The only other major thing is, so the statements are in there. The only other major thing I have, I don't have a check detail report for you this month, um, because I won't have it until later in the month because of what goes into the, uh, wrapping up the end of the fiscal year. Um, but I do have the vacant structures transfer for you. Um, and I forgot to put a copy in front of myself, so I hope somebody can read that number.
Seven hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars.
Seven hundred?
Yes.
Um, so I would just ask you to make that move.
Is there a motion to transfer seven hundred dollars to vacant structures?
Awesome.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else, Joe?
Uh, that's all for finance, um, when, when we get down to it.
Street department?
Hey, yes, my report's in your office. Any questions that you have? But, you know, we have been busy on both sides. Of what the street department is doing, the sanitary board and also the street department. Any other questions?
There's a possum on Center Avenue.
Well, there was a deer they picked up on court.
I saw that, that's what made me think of it.
Um, I really appreciate the help with the Fourth of July Independence Day celebration. Um, I know that's a long day and it's a hot day and we really appreciate it. Also, town looks really nice. Um, I know you guys worked on the downtown area quite a bit and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Like I was telling you earlier, even though we do have these festivals and it's one day. Still think it's a few days to get ready.
Sure. And then clean up. Right.
Thank you.
Well, people really do appreciate the effort you put in.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. One is the whole school where you, the sewer was fixed on White River, what does that have to do with this?
Uh, there's the one that gets them toward Stevens property. Uh, we were waiting on a hoe that, that's about fourteen feet deep. We do not have the equipment to make that heavy. So we're waiting on a, on a hoe to make that point. Uh, spoke with, uh, the contractor, this actually was about one thirty today and his hoe will be put back together. And the reason why I'm staying with him, because he's also done the others for me and, and who knows how we need to take care of this. And the other thing is Debbie, half of us done. The other half, we gotta go up into, uh, the gentleman's, uh, property and repair that.
So, you mind if you still be digging out there?
Yes, we'll be digging on the closest one toward, uh, city building.
Steven has two.
Yeah, we.
Why there is a long time.
We tried to pick them really fast. And then after, after we get that, then I would say, how they want to, how they better, because that's very, it's not.
In my word, you're like Montgomery, he's breached. Well, it's kind of getting run over and get some of the ditch shot.
What did you say?
My guy Murray going down to shake.
I think you, I think you talked to, touched on that a little bit. Um, just letting you know with this, I am down two people.
Yeah, I said, yeah.
And I know you do. Appreciate that. We're down two people. Then it just seems like Debbie, uh, we'll take vacation when everybody wants to take a vacation. That's what Joe and I was talking about today. I don't think I'm going to be able to let people, two, three people be off at the same time. It's really hurting us. Uh, trying to take care of what all the doors, so, I don't know, we can revamp and do some of that stuff. Again, like I said, we're down to twenty-four or I think it's twenty-nine, twenty-nine weeks we discussed vacations. And I don't think they'll all come. Last week, I think we went home in July. I was down five people last week.
Farmers market. We really appreciate you down downtown, though. We're five outside, first. In downtown, so we don't have to take the entire car.
I think the last time we done that and, and we done that, we weren't allowed to do this anymore on some of the streets.
Okay, because I, I thought you, I know that state uses states.
Yeah, uh, I know the state does it on, on the, on the guardrails on the other side of everywhere else, but I think Debbie, you're looking at no one walks over there now along the sidewalks. And I think it's
I just try to make it easier for you.
And I wish we could. Are we allowed to call that? I've never been to one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Have you ever considered using the DRC, their, um, community service hours, a lot of the people I work with, the Navy Center Sheriff's staff, um, to say like they come out, we, is that a possibility? Because I, I know we have lots of people that are required through the courses to have community service and they can always clean their office so many times. Like, we have things that people that need community service to do, and I think that'd be one partnership for community corrections, help the community. I may be, I'll speak, I think my boss, our, our service, maybe we could talk in another setting that uses all someone supervised. We have a community service coordinator that watches them, supervises them as long as you can provide the equipment. Sure, it could be set up where they can help with some of the stuff and bring the city and the community along.
I do appreciate you commenting on that. We have looked into that with some of the rehab that's up at the state hospital. And then it falls back to, I think it's, uh, we have to have workers come on some of these people, something like that. So it's, that falls underneath that and it really makes it.
So with us for community persons, the DRC, which is right here around the courthouse, um, we have our own liability insurance and they got community services, always our supervised. No, I have community corrections, um, community service supervisor. Um, and they have the, the, the relevant here on that. We just don't purchase the, any kind of the equipment that they may need as long as you guys can provide the equipment. My understanding is we could help that way. Because we do bridge work for Upstate County. We clean the bridges and we keep them maintained. Um, I know we don't have a lot of opportunities with them in this county. Maybe this could be something to help with the city that can go out and walk shore.
If you have any opportunities.
Sounds good.
I mean, because part of the, part of their probation, they have eighty, eighty hours a year they have to do for them to, um, get off of the program.
Do you have a card?
Oh, yes, actually I do.
Yeah. Can we, yeah, hands out to everybody. Can they water flowers?
Thank you, Brooke.
I had to throw that out there, Tab. Thank you.
Uh, police department, any questions for Chief President?
I have a question. Did we get a bus for Dobby? Just, um, Dobby have a bus? Bulletproof and a badge?
Dig the badges.
Okay. New budget, July one? I think, I think that's important that, um, to have a badge. To recognize.
Thing I'll add is, um, hopefully steal some time with Joe tomorrow and finish our postings and then with that post this week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Citations, good. Guys were busy.
Fire department report and you also have the EMS report. I, I just wanted to, uh, about the EMS, uh, individually personally. Uh, they came to spend long time square in my damn factory, her house, her home. And very professional. Appreciate everything they did. Very, very professional. Actually, guys, some of the sign. I think if things, my judgments are
Yeah, I'm hoping maybe Joe this week, I mean, it's been pretty pretty busy. We've turned down a lot of things. I just don't have our staffing to do it. So once we get more, hire full-time staffing, it'll be a lot better.
I know when they were my age, you got to change the two other questions in the off for, I knew the truth as well, so.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, Jimmy, but at one point you'd reported to me that we had accepted just as many calls as we had turned down because we had to turn down that many calls because either A, we didn't have the staff or B, we didn't have a second ambulance.
I did ask you about.
Do you want to see this?
Why we had turned down thirteen and you said there was like a forty-five day wait for you to.
Well, then thirteen we turned down there, we just didn't have enough time there to work.
Oh, okay.
Because why we're hiring part-time right now, they only work thirty hours or we'll, until we get into a new budget.
Which will be in revision one.
Hopefully next week we'll be able to sit down and at least hire a few to get, get them there. This, it's super busy.
Yes. Do you want to talk about the house alert system? Are you pleased with that?
So that is the alerting system we went to. That's only three units in our trucks. It's mainly on the interstate. I don't know if it's making a difference, but it seems like cars are slowing down a lot more. It is, it seems like it's alerting them. One of our guys was passing the scene that popped up on the dash of his truck. That mean it seems to be alerting people a lot. So this is the monthly totals, it's alerted seventeen hundred, one thousand, seven hundred and eighteen drivers. So a total of thirty-nine incidents on the interstate. It seems to be working. Maybe eventually you get a couple more and see if it helps us. We got it on about three main trucks that's on the interstate. Get that siren right down.
Well, I think that, um, you know, that has recently been in the news about, um, the new, you know, the law reenterating the, the law about merging when you see emergency vehicles, because people, drivers just aren't.
They chase it, it's a lot of that. They've been trying to stop some people that's not getting there, so.
Right. Um, but I think that if you get this alert that comes in your car system, it's just an added safety precaution for you guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We had a fire.
Yes.
Spectators, I meant to emergency, then take care of that. So there's nothing to leave in fire, on the emergency fire.
Questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I responded to you. It has been ongoing and she comes and been involved with that. The refresh made from talk about one. I did, I still haven't talked to him yet. He was in Wednesday, so he was standing over filed suit against the neighborhood because he thinks they have a property and all that stuff. But wanted to see, he may have come up with government or trespassing or whatever where he can't go and we hit it up. So I wanted to find out what's going on with him. And, and I didn't hear back to him. But, yeah, I mean, he's, he's already had it corrected there. So the next thing is, if, if I since my previous attorney told me, don't send anybody in that, which we were normally doing in the building. He does, he threatened to shoot it. So I just holding off on his advice. Yeah. From, from the citation. We had, well, I had four or five court cases this. Those people that you brought in.
When you say previous, it's. You say previous?
Yes.
I thought I couldn't hear you.
And I'm going to ask, I know that was going to be this, but. When you, the chief, I think we still have an issue on that constant. That the world is maybe going to harm them. Can we look further into that?
He said he was gonna have to make a few of mine. I have. The lady that owns it, lived down, she down the street with her son. Her daughter and her granddaughter, both four of them, they don't stay in there. They just go in, they're getting some stuff out slowly. But I have other people saying, well, somebody's staying there tonight. So I don't know if it's them or if it's other people squatting or whatever. But she said he's gonna have night crews to arrive and help. During the day, they're not in there. I've got help.
I know there's like crazy stuff.
Yeah. They're so luxurious. So and it's condemned, so they're not supposed to be there. They, somebody's calling, staying there. I can't.
Now, if we consider them, it's not wrong. It took me much time before we prepared to play stand side.
Well, it's all, it's all on the list. Yeah, I've got eleven other ones out right now. And I'm gonna see where I stand with my budget. Um, because I'm, I'm gonna go a little way with the grant with these alignment. And then I'm gonna take a look at the rest of my demo budget and see like how many more I might be able to get. I want to reserve, well, we're, we're just at the beginning of fifty budget. So, but I want to reserve a little bit towards the end of the budget here in case we have a fire or something that we have to kill.
Still on by the scale, with a lot of big structure, probably helping, probably anything, but that house. So we see that something else we have on your list.
There's one over there with a for sale sign. I'm always gonna start with that one.
I don't think, I don't think it was bumping ahead right now on what I'll be letting, that I have out for right now. Some of those are ones that are gonna be brought to you. As, as, you know, people want to donate to the city and so group. And we said we were gonna prioritize those as well.
But I'm, I'm concerned about, I'm glad there's no children living there at this point. If it's with them, though, we feel like kids belong in the back, possibly probably higher too.
We've been there several times for a little.
Um, first, I just want to give kudos to the fire department, uh, both for the Fourth of July celebration. And for the good work with the ambulance. It's really been a needed service in the community and I think that, uh, a proof of concept has worked. I guess two important pieces of business, uh, which the city council knows are that the city attorney and the city engineer both submitted their resignations last month. Um, the city attorney, uh, has been working two jobs, us being one of them. And he had the opportunity to work one job and make his life a little bit easier and work a little bit closer to home. Um, and he took that opportunity and we're happy for him. Um, the city engineer, uh, I think when he took that position, uh, he thought he was gonna have more spare time than he ended up having. Uh, and so he decided that it was, is no longer something sustainable for him. Um, the attorney position is, is one that I think we'll talk about a little bit in executive session. I think that, uh, for timeliness reasons, we want to figure something out pretty quickly with that. Um, the city engineer position is one that we can probably, uh, lose by attrition, um, in revision one of the budget. Uh, unless city council tells me something, otherwise I think that's the assumption that I'm, uh, moving forward on, um, for now. Uh, couple other updates. Um, uh, this morning, um, I had a meeting with Spring Hall from the HLC as well as Region Seven. Um, Region Seven is, is now gonna be taking over the, um, uh, Columbia Club earmark project. Um, we're at a point in that project where it's a good, it's a good point for them to pick it up and start running with that ball. Um, so we're excited for that. Uh, also an update on the Riverfront project. Um, Kimley Horn is currently working, they're the ones who are doing the grant management for that project. Kimley Horn is currently working on the environmental study, um, and they hope to have that wrapped up. Um, I think within the next several weeks, uh, so that we can then, um, as soon as the environmental study is approved by the DEP. Uh, we can start, um, in hard construction. Um, so we were hoping that that could be by this fall, um, and that timeline still looks like it could be on track. Um, as long as they get that environmental study done, uh, on the timeline they were hoping to. Um, I think most of the other updates I have for you will be covered later in the executive session. Um, so unless you have any other particular questions for me, I'll save those for later. Go ahead, Herb. It has. Yeah. No, and. Yeah. I, I will get, I, I will try to give you an update every month on that. Um, just, just to be candid, part of what's happened. Uh, so whereas we're using Kimley Horn for the grant management of the Riverfront project and there's been steady progress on that. The, uh, um, Cultural Center project is something that we've tried to manage in-house. Most recently, the city engineer was tasked with managing that project. Um, and I think the city engineer in his wisdom said, it's time we pass this off to Region Seven, so, so we can really make some, some headway on it. Uh, so I think that we are in the right position now to really start making some headway on it. Um, because without a doubt, it's, it's been, it's, it's been the ball that's been passed around the office a little bit. Um, but I will try to give you, uh, more frequent updates on what's going on with that. So the, the earmark is secured and the earmark covers the facade as well as a lot of other things.
Yeah, it was part of the facade plus some other things, but then, um. We weren't supposed to have to supply in the next.
Right.
When we applied for the grant, then after COVID, they came back and the failure said, okay, we are requiring match. So it's gonna be like two hundred thousand dollars. So we were trying to figure out where we're gonna get that funding from. And then.
And then they. Yeah, so then they came back again and said, uh, we can count some of these expenses that you've already had spent towards it in the last several years. Um, towards that match and there's, there's a certain date they're willing to go back to. Um, that covers most, if not all of the grant. Um, I think the, the update on the facade is it's still priority number one when we get to the construction phase. Um, but I, I think realistically, construction is not before spring. Um, I think spring twenty six is, I think realistically what, what we're looking at. Yeah, no, it's okay. Yeah.
I'm going to say a motion to approve all of the city reports.
Second.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Next, under new business, we have a request for the Rock for Recovery on August second from one to two P M.
A second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes. One o'clock, even though it's, he's one of them rounds should be five.
It's a Saturday. Thank you for everything that you do.
Next consideration.
Just a couple of words on this. Uh, this is normally something that would be approved by the BZA. Um, the BZA has failed to have a meeting the last two months. Um, you are the superordinate board of the BZA. Um, so I talked to Brian about this before he left and he said, yeah, the council has the authority to step in on behalf of the BZA and approve it since they're unable to meet. Um, and we are on timeline with those. Um, I'll talk a little bit more about ARPA timelines in executive session. Uh, but we certainly want to get those facade grants approved, um, so that we can get those things done before the end of the calendar year.
These facade grants were approved, um, by Landmarks Commission. Um, and incidentally, all of the facade grants go through our code enforcement officer. Um, he is, he sits down with the historic landmarks when the grants are approved. So all of the dimensions have been, um, pre-approved by the. I'm looking, which one are we looking at first? Military museum? That's the first one. Okay. In this particular, um, facade grant. She is just replacing what was there existing. There is a photo of that sign. She's lost some letters, which no longer form words. And, um, so she's just simply replacing what she already has. But because it's a sign, it had to go through the, um, BZA. And it's in the, yes, Historic District. So you can see the submission there. I'm not seeing that request in here for the dollar amount. It should be.
His project budget, four thousand eight hundred thirty five dollars.
There it is. I found it. It is in there. It is for, it would be for half of forty eight, so it wouldn't, somebody have a calculator. Um, the total is forty eight hundred and thirty five dollars. Yes, so it, it would not be for twenty five hundred, it would be for twenty four because our ruling is, uh, half, up to five thousand. So that's the amount that we would be approving. Yep. The grant.
And I agree to a point that if it's being approved by council, I think the dollar amount needs to be stated.
Okay, twenty four, huh, um, two thousand four hundred. And seventeen fifty and fifty cents. Did you guys hear that?
Have to prove these in total.
Um, well, we can approve them separately if you would like.
They need the requirements.
Okay. Okay. The next one is, uh, Sweet Espresso. And they submitted, you can see their light, which also matches the other lights on the building. That project has already been approved and does not need to go through the BZA. However, the signage does, and if you see the front of the building, there is already an existing pole for the flag. Um. And then they gave you the sign. And, um, Marty has gone through and, and approved the size of the sign. So what we're looking at this evening is approval of the sign project. Now, she did not break that down into a dollar amount. Uh, she said approximately, yeah. Um, but I can tell you how these grants are reimbursed. Um, the, she would have to turn in her receipts and then they're approved and she would receive half. So she has an approximate materials because lots of times when you do special order signs, the cost can tend to vary. Also. Because it has been two months, the price, pricing may have changed. Um, let's see. It's a thousand, approximately five hundred, fifteen hundred. A thousand to fifteen. Well, the first one. I don't think so. Yes, but part of that is because of the light that was already approved that you're not approving, so.
These are the only.
So we are approving our half of a thousand dollars. Yes, those are the only two.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Consideration of fiscal year twenty twenty five.
All right, um, that is not an error. It does mean to say fiscal year twenty twenty five. Um, I'm asking, so basically this is our, uh, spring paving that we, we do every spring. Um, I think we've not been, uh, uh, we've not hidden the fact that as we're catching our stride with the newly formed Public Works Department. Um, and we're behind, and we're down a couple of employees. Um, we're, uh, we're running to keep, keep up and we're just now getting caught up. Um, so this is the spring paving. Uh, we will still do summer paving. Um, but specifically after, uh, Mike gives you the list of streets that he's looking to pave. Um, I ask you to make the motion, um, that we do this paving out of fiscal year twenty twenty five budget, uh, which I can still do and execute quickly. Um, so we can get that carryover calculated, um, and start getting some streets paved, uh, to get caught up on our spring paving. So, Mike, what do you got for us?
It's Peggy Street. Sorry. In Ward Two, it's Peggy Street and I think that's divided between Steve and, and Debbie, right? And I just lost it. Uh, okay, and then, um. Wright Street. Also, and that would be in Ward Two. And that will go from the, uh, senior citizen. Over to the doctor's office and come back out on by Wilson's carpet, if you all can follow me there. And the other one is Pleasant Street. Um, Pleasant Street's gonna need a good little bit of work. Pleasant Street's going to need a good little bit of work. And that was the one that goes up from the 911 center now. There's only one house up there, but it's in pretty bad shape. Ward Three is Catherine Street, all of Catherine Street. And Delaware Street coming off of Catherine, only over to Minnick. And Ward One, we decided we would go up on top and do the Edward Street. Going from town run down just to the top of the hill where they're putting in those new houses. Edward. Yeah, they're at, on possibly Diamond Hill.
Oh, okay. That's what I. Oh, that's true. That's true. I forgot about that.
And Lee Street over in Ward Four. Total of 400, 429 ton. And I think at that 429, what were we, 1, 150? One second, see if I can come up with that. It was a total of $62,940.77 for those streets.
It's not what I.
Edwards, Lee Street, 429 ton, having a proximal cost of $62,940.77 to the fiscal year 2025 budget. I'm here to three. All second. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next discussion or consideration of bids for elevator vertical platform lift.
Uh, it's, yeah. So there's my announcement is I think the last page in the, in the packet page 106. Basically, I'm just asking you to approve a bid announcement to request bids for either an elevator or a vertical platform lift. This is something that we put into the budget for the city building in the new budget year, something I plan to retain for revision one. A vertical platform lift is just like an elevator, but it can only travel one floor and it's about one tenth the price. So it meets all of our needs. So we'll probably see bids for vertical platform lift. To the best of my knowledge, there's only one company around that really does this. But because of the amount that we're probably looking to spend on it, I think it's appropriate that it be bid out. So I just ask you to approve that and I'll get that in the paper and by the end of the month, we'll see where we stand.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next. Consideration of reappointment of city officials, interim city manager, finance manager, judge, and city court. So I think what you want me to do is to we're going to be reappointing here this evening, considering the reappointment of the interim city manager, finance manager, and city clerk.
I, I think you should also appoint your municipal court judge tonight.
Judge Durango.
And, and then also state code eight S five dash eight, eight dash five dash eight says that all city officials have to be sworn, all appointed city officials have to be sworn in. So after you do that, I would ask the mayor to administer the oath of office to the city clerk and the city clerk will administer the oath of office to everybody else.
Hey, shall we take these one by one?
I think you should.
Okay, first, I'll entertain a need to reappoint the interim city manager, finance manager, Solberg.
So moved.
Then a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, motion to reappoint Judge James Durango.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. And finally, motion to reappoint city clerk Judy Piercy. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If the city clerk is ready, if you would raise your right hand, please. I state your name, Judy Piercy. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia. And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia. And that I will truly. And that I will truly. Faithfully and impartially discharge. Truthfully, faithfully, and impartially discharge. The duties of the office upon which I am about to enter. The duties upon the office I am about to enter. To the best of my skill and judgment. To the best of my skill and judgment. You're, you're drafted.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy.
Next, we'll move on to reports of city council. And we'll begin with form one.
Oh, first of all, I would like to thank the fire department for a wonderful Fourth of July street fair and, and everything was, it was a street party. It was just a wonderful evening and I know that our residents really enjoyed it. Also, thank you for the initiative that you've taken with the ambulance. It's certainly serving a much needed, much needed service for our, for our community. Our city attorney and city engineer. I appreciate all the hard work that they've done over the years. They've certainly left us in a much better place than when they came and wish them the best with their new careers and, and career choices. You know, it would be, it would be selfish not to wish them the best, but I'm, I'm sure that, that their lives will be full of success because they give their heart and soul to their job and I appreciate them. Also, I want to thank everybody else here who's staying with us. We appreciate you very much. I'm sure that everyone's been really busy. Summertime is kind of a busy, busy time, especially for law enforcement. Appreciate you very much. So Marty, all your work that you've done with the historic landmarks and coming and going over the grants with us. I know that's a lot of extra time. We appreciate it. Thank you. And thanks, Mike, for the streets looking so nice for our summer and our Fourth of July. I appreciate all of that. I'm sure I've forgotten someone like Dee at the sanitary board and all of the sanitary workers and street and I really appreciate them really pulling together and melding so well as a team with those two departments. I think they've shown some real initiative and love for their community and I appreciate them. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the police department, fire department, street department, sanitation board. I think we've been doing well. I haven't gotten too many, too many complaints and most of which have already been addressed by everybody. So I appreciate the proactive work that everybody's doing. Stephanie, thanks for sharing the words from your board. I appreciate always hearing feedback. I don't think we get enough, especially for the amount of complaints we receive. So I definitely appreciate that. And, and thank everybody for coming out tonight. And yeah, I think after this July Fourth weekend, we look like a very united community and I really appreciate that. Hopefully we can keep up the good work.
Just want to put out there, by the time Ward Three and Ward Four get up here, there's not much left for us to do.
I'm good with that. We take 55 minutes and I'll finish out the act right here.
Uh, but I, I would, I appreciate us moving forward with a lot of projects, getting the facade grant up and running. Glad to see that we are helping businesses downtown and nonprofits to spruce up their buildings. So that is good. I'm really glad to hear we are going to be starting paving. Everybody knows I'm the paving person here on the group. So I, I appreciate paving. And I would like to address the public a little bit here. We pass ordinances here on the council for protection. Protection for property owners, protection for safety and a lot of the ordinances that we do are to maintain property. So I please ask that you mow your grass. Six inches is the thing. And I do ask that you pick up the trash around your house and throwing it into neighbors' yards is not appropriate at any area of our town. So if we can, you know, take a little bit of pride in our, our town as we are seeing it improve with beautification, festivals, I ask that citizens out there also join us in, in taking pride in our city and moving forward. With that, I'll turn it over to Ward Four.
I have nothing to say. No. I'd like to thank all the city staff. Everything you got to do. Thank Jimmy. Fire Department for saving my life and my, with the bats. I can't believe they're talking at. And I think it's very nice and complimentary that we made as far as on behalf of the Fourth of July and the fireworks and it just shows that we come together as a team with any project or anything we do. Put that in there in the city. It shows what we've been doing together, as a team working together. I think I'm moving much forward. We actually approve a couple of considerations. Best interest of the heart of the, of the provided and keeping it forward.
To discuss personnel removal.
Yeah.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. I urge. Thanks, everybody. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my gentleman said. I'm not going, I will, I will, it'll be back. I got one face shot. All right. So again, the next.